Let's do. Part of the mess of it while we're talking. You get that, let's work. Yeah.
Okay.
This is not just a law. Yeah. Is the. Is this me anymore? Must be. Well, they. That will do it.
Was it important?
Yeah, now it's fine. I think Catherine Johnson's up there.
It's still not an option, like.
That's because I don't have a plug in.
Oh, yeah.
It's so hard to plug that thing in.
Here it's. Is it an option now? Okay, cool. You know, that thing was over a thousand dollars. Do you think it would be worth its mouth? Wow. I think Catherine Johnson booked that.
She was there.
Yeah, she said. All right, let's try this again. So um. We'll open the meeting. Any adjustments to the agenda? We said no?
No.
Okay.
Do we want to discuss the gym roof or wait for next year?
Are you feeling about that?
Yeah, we didn't discuss tonight.
Tonight, okay.
That'll be quiet.
It'll be under old business scene. Part of you taking minutes?
I don't know. I was going, are we on a slower meeting now?
Yes.
Oh, okay, well then, yes, I am.
All right. We officially opened at five thirty-five.
Okay.
And we're adjusting the agenda, adding discussion of the gym roof um to old business. And do we have public comment sign up or? I can open it if there's any public comment right now. Um, all right, let's jump into old business. A is solar moratorium.
Make a motion to extend. And I'll make a motion to extend the more solar moratorium.
Till November.
To November four.
And retroactive to May.
From May.
June from May, okay. One second.
Any discussion? I am, I have mixed feelings. You know, I hear folks with projects um uh in progress, leases, um. You know, we just talked about the hybrid situation of having a solar ray put on rooftops um that connect to the grid and. As a property owner, you know, I. I'd be concerned that I wouldn't be able to go through with that during the moratorium. I just have a lot of questions and um. In terms of, you know, legality of. How to do that, so.
Has anybody read this one or what?
Yeah, let's bring that up.
I don't have my laptop out here. I only have this one. Otherwise, I would.
It should be. The ordinances. It's not on our website, amazingly, and it should, it's an ordinance.
Will we get a copy of that? Yeah.
You know, I guess I just feel, you know, um a responsibility to minimize the town's liability in 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 terms of lawsuit, if I can be blunt about that, that would be incurred. Um, I just, like I said, I just have mixed feelings and I guess I need more information. From a legal standpoint.
What's the town's lawyer say?
We'll defer to Elena on that. She's had that conversation.
I understand we spoke earlier, but.
I mean, as far as. Okay, so the solar work for him is on commercial solar energy facilities on.
Commercial, okay.
And that covers industrial, I assume?
Yeah. So as far as like private on your rooftop, that that would still be allowed?
Even if it's connected and selling back to the grid.
Right, because that's not considered commercial. I'm just scanning this real quick in the middle.
Okay.
Do we know the amount of commercial and industrial solar projects that were perceived to be ongoing?
There seems to be more and more people coming forward saying, oh, I had one going. So we don't know the exact.
Do we have access to timeline? In other words, if they say that they have a contract, do we have a right to see when those dates were?
Yes, if they.
Regarding. You know, in accordance to when this moratorium happened.
Yes, obviously, if they challenged it legally, they would have to provide that information, you know, with that agreement that was signed on such and such a date. You know, they can't just say, well, I had this.
The other thing I can, I can tell you is that um CMP was reached out to to find out what projects were on their books on that had interconnect agreements, because without an interconnect agreement, I mean, you can sign a lease to use your land for anything. If you don't have an interconnect agreement where CMP has said, sure, we'll hook you up, then it doesn't matter. Um, and there were only two projects. Uh, the project on the North Guilford Road that's proposed and a project on um.
Elliot's phone.
On, no, the only other one that that CMP said was on um.
Chappan.
Chappan Avenue, going towards the, towards the dump and the old blue said, um, those were the only two projects that CMP said they had signed interconnection agreements with.
So those are the only two potential lawsuits?
I don't know. I can't speak to to the to the legal side of things. I think anybody can probably bring. I'm not sure that what legal leg they would have to stand on, other than like if you've got a signed lease for your your land, but it's not cons- uh, without an interconnection agreement, you can, I could sign up to do a hundred acre solar project, but it can't be supported by our infrastructure. And so I wouldn't have a legal leg to stand on, because I I couldn't do the project even if I wanted to. So I I I think that's where it gets really confusing to to what what does the the lease mean versus having an actual interconnect agreement with CMP where they have agreed to connect you to the grid into the substation, if that makes sense.
Can I be so bold as to ask you both a question about, so how does this work? You have a lease and then is there an expected timeline to hear back from CMP or you apply to them for?
Our company did that on, the company that signed up with us, that we signed up with. They took care of all of that and they were building their own. Substate.
Yeah, we're doing whatever they're gonna just.
Yes.
Transformers and.
Right. They take care of that all.
Okay.
Right.
So you do, you do have a connection agreement then?
They do.
They they.
That right, no, well, does, yes. And and with ours, it's not gonna be visible from the road and or from our house. I wouldn't, I wouldn't wanna see it, you know what I mean? And so it's it's in a place where it's not going to be um a troubling, you know, an eyesore.
I just sent you guys all a copy of the same work. The Montego.
Okay. So it would be companies that sue the town.
And I don't know that it would be as much of a suing thing as it would be challenged in court.
Or appealed.
Yeah.
Something.
Do we know what the what's going on across the country? Because this is obviously happening across the board because of the tax incentives. Big Solar is totally rushing, right? Let's face it.
Yeah.
Have you guys done any research regarding how it's turning out in other towns in terms of the challenging in court?
Not that I know of.
No, my understanding is that there are a lot of communities in Maine specifically that are going through the same, the same growing pains and that that some of the early actors um that that had less restrictive policies around solar are now pulling back and and regrouping because of what's happening with on the 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 billing side of things with with sort of that. This solar CMP has to pay the going rate for the energy, but they can only sell it for, I mean, the latest numbers I saw were was five cents per kilowatt. And so that gap has to be made up by other ratepayers, whether that's personal, like my personal property or business. And so a lot of communities have, I I think it's fair to say, started to rethink it. Um. That is not to say that that our ordinance that's being written couldn't take into account some of those projects that we're now aware of that we weren't before. Um. But I'm not sure exactly what's what's going.
Do they take that into account or the select board? In other words, do we write an ordinance that the town wants and then we avoid potential problems?
The solar ordinance you're talking about.
Yes, we write a solo ordinance that the town wants. I think it's relatively clear. But then do we give the exemptions so that we just avoid fiscal issues that we can't afford?
That's a great question. Um.
Has that been considered?
It it absolutely. It's um, I know that with the 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 ordinance that that we already had the vote on, um there were. It was gone through the process of of having open meetings and and it was written, I think it was written um with an understanding of what was was going on, what was officially on the books for projects. I think that um there was that the meeting a couple of weeks ago where people came and gave their their comments about what they would like to see. Um. I'm not sure that we've taken an official uh position. Ultimately, they write the ordinance and they're separate bodies and that's done intentionally. Um, they write the ordinance. We hold the the hearing and the vote on that ordinance, but we don't write the ordinance. And so it's whatever, essentially whatever they bring to us um goes to the town for an up or down vote. And so and that's not me trying to.
Right, pass the hours.
Pass the buck or say it's it's not really, I mean, yes, some of those discussions have been had because that's a huge concern. Like, we don't wanna open the town up to to any legal responsibility um or liability.
I would just add that the moratorium is also considered an ordinance. And so that's why we had to have a public hearing and now for us to um decide on its fate. Um, and I'm just skimming through the um moratorium definitions of a solar uh commercial solar energy facility needs a commercial solar energy farm or development with a complete design or assembly for commercial purposes consisting of energy collection and energy storage facility where used and components for distribution of transformed energy. A commercial solar energy system consists of one or more freestanding ground mounted or building mounted solar arrays or modules or solar related equipment. When I read that, I think it's house top solar that is tied to the grid.
It's what?
House top solar array that can be sold back.
It says commercial on that definition you just read.
Right, right.
It doesn't say household.
It says building mounted, I think.
But I think that it's for its sole purpose would be commercial.
Commercial, right. Commercial, you're selling this to other people, not just to see.
It's like at Turning Page, theirs is not a commercial system. It is a system that is grid tied. And so if they make excess power or surplus power, they it's it goes back to the grid, but that's not their sole purpose is to power their farm with that solar. And so they're not a registered commercial system. They are a res.
Like, nobody else can benefit from their.
So.
Solar.
They're not selling directly like, like the other one.
But they're selling CMP.
Right, but it's not, but it's it's still considered residential and it is size.
Why, this definition is just, yeah.
To Sue's point, though, it's hooked on to the grid, whereas for the people that are off the grid. That's right, that's not commercial. That's not.
Right.
That is just survival to an extent.
And what we're hearing about capacity for the town, if you know, we, if, let's say I had um a a solar array on my house that connected to the grid, so whatever I didn't use goes back to soul um is purchased um to CMB, CMP, then it's included in that town capacity from what James was um consulting. It's very confusing.
All the more reason to extend the moratorium, I would hope.
Yes, I mean, then the reason for the moratorium is you've got to have some type of ordinance in place, you know? Whether it goes one way or the other way, but without anything, it's just a total free for all.
Well, the state, the state mandates, so it's not really a free for all.
Yes, the state does have some mandates on it, but.
And recently, it was in the newspaper with their mandates for it, so.
And in any, any power that somebody's generating that goes back into the grid, somebody's getting compensated for it, and the bill's getting reduced, well, they're gonna send you a check. Bingo, that's commercial.
It's not, though.
It would still be considered residential.
It's considered, it's completely different. When you build a solar array with the sole purpose of generating power for sale, it's different than when you develop, when when you have a solar array that generates excess power that gets sold back to the grid. It's 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 a different.
But you're being compensated.
It it doesn't, it, that doesn't impact the how it's defined. It's it's about what the purpose of that array is. It's it's not. It's first purpose is to power your house and then excess power is sold. That's my understanding. Um, we can ask for for um.
Yeah.
Clarification on that. Um, but I, from the the work that from my understanding, that's how that works. It's it's a different, like, the the system that Tyler built up here, that's a commercial system. Its sole purpose was to sell power.
To make money.
Um, right, and that's.
What's wrong with making money?
Nothing, nothing, at all. Nobody's saying there's anything wrong with that.
Right.
But that's how the, how it breaks down. That's, that's how it breaks down.
Right.
Um, uh, it's, there's nothing wrong with.
Right.
We're all in title.
So, I mean, there, you can even Google the difference between commercial and residential solar, and when it comes up, like, there isn't difference. Um, and so like, commercial is usually larger versus residential. Residential is actually more expensive for whatever reason. Um, but that being able to decipher the two makes it, makes me believe that the commercial is specific, like. Let me talk about the ordinance again, the moratorium.
The definition could be more clear. I think that's absolutely true.
And I feel like that's also.
But the way that I read that, the first part of that definition says that it's a commercial solar energy farm.
For commercial purposes consisting of uh energy collection and an energy storage facility, whereas you for the distribution of transformed energy.
Distribution.
Distribution, yeah.
Um, but it is lucky. I think that's why the ordinance is is important, I think. Um. To to create rules around how solar can be developed. I don't think that um that the goal was to to keep. I I I believe the goal was to to create a process and that's the the ordinance, the meeting that's taking place that started ten minutes ago is dealing with that process and what's allowed and what's disallowed. What we're discussing is the the moratorium on a sh- on a short term basis and whether or not that should be extended. Um. I think the fact that um there's an ordinance under development and they have made substantive progress, um. I know that it didn't pass, but I think that at that meeting, we were asked the question if the moratorium would continue if the ordinance was was defeated and and our answer was yes. I think that that's the understanding that um that many citizens in town have is that the moratorium is in effect and to to not extend it to November fourth. I think at at that time, if we were asked to extend it again, it's a completely different conversation at that point. Um. Or maybe it's a more in-depth, but I think we were all operating under the the belief that we had a moratorium in place until the fourth of November. Unfortunately, because we received some direction that wasn't accurate, we acted in a way that we need to remedy. But had we known at the time that that we weren't doing it correctly, we would have done it correctly and extended more likely than not.
Right.
Um.
At one point, um, it was only extended for a hundred and twenty days.
Right.
I wanna say it was the November meeting. Um. And I hear what you're saying. It, you know, I think I, my hopes were, would be that we would have an ordinance uh in place way before November. Um.
And I do think they were on the right path as far as getting it done by then.
And I know in that meeting in November, the thought was that this process would have happened back in February, but the town lawyer left changed positions and it fell into a no coverage area for a while where we were waiting, the planning board was waiting for for a response from the town lawyer and it had fallen sort of into a black hole until they reconnected with them and got it restarted. And then it was town meeting and things pushed it until, until, was it August that we voted? It seems so long ago.
May.
No, that we voted on, the ordinance got voted down. Was August correct?
Yep.
Um, so it. I'm with you, like, we need to make.
Yeah, well, in my, you know, my other concern are are the two projects that are in progress and how does this how does this jive with with that? Um, Elena, have you had any advice from the town attorney?
Not really. Um, the attorney that was working with the planning board, um, maybe they have received more guidance than we have. Um, really, the only guidance that I have was strictly for the extension of the ordinance and what the process is there.
Okay.
I think that not having a moratorium is and then slapping an ordinance on top, like, without having a moratorium in between, like, I think that leaves us a little bit more open for.
Yeah.
Than not.
Yeah.
Especially where we've had one for such a long time.
You go, Jonathan?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right. Um, so we were voting, uh, motion was made and seconded to ex- um extend the moratorium to November fourth, retroactive to what was the date?
May something, um.
Does it make or not?
I think so. My goodness, prior to.
Okay. All right, um, Paul and David.
It's actually May eighth.
May eighth, okay. All right, um. Next on the agenda is the local liquor election.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I've been really doing groundwork for this one. So there's, I even drafted a motion so that we can't mess it up. Um. And you guys have to. Sure. Yeah. So I in the months of trying to figure out how we go about this, um there's a special motion you guys have to make and which cites both the questions that we want to ask at a special town meeting. And we have to hold a public hearing ten days prior to it. But in order to do that, you have to file this intentions um with the clerk sixty days prior to the election. So I picked out a day of November fourteenth to have this election. And so this ele- it will actually be a referendum question. So even though we're not a referendum town, they still require us to do it by secret ballot, which means we would, we have to have absentee balloting. It will be just like any other state election.
Okay.
Um, so we'll make up our own ballots. Um, absentee ballots will be available for thirty days prior to the election and then um, the special town meeting um would be November fourteenth as well.
Okay. When did you say the hearing would then be the?
The ten days, at least ten days prior to. So anytime, anytime except for ten days before. So once we. So once we, and I didn't schedule that because we might have something else that we need to piggyback off that public hearing for. But um, one of the requirements is that this can be the only question on the ballot, which we wouldn't vote in a referendum for for anything else either. So we can have other things on the special town meeting. We just can't have anything else on that ballot. So um, this is oh, so. Um, and I have special notices for the public hearing when that's time, special notices that have to be signed by you guys. Um, return of the warrant that has to be signed by you guys before before that comes. So I'll give that to you at a later date when that comes. Um. And then if you guys vote to sign the um municipal officer's order for the election, I'll I'll um type up the questions in here. I didn't realize that it said set forth ballot questions here. So I need to type that in there, but if you vote to sign it, you guys can come in and sign.
Okay.
But the questions are already wrote on your motion, so it will be the same.
It's a lot of information there.
It is a lot. It is so much.
After all that.
Yeah.
Is there something we have to do tonight?
Thank you for asking that.
Like, cause that's the big question. So I, and and
Yep.
I make a motion and we hold a special local option election on November fourteenth, twenty twenty four to vote on the following questions. One, shall this municipality authorize the state to permit the sales of spirits for off premises consumption on days other than Sunday? And two, shall this municipality authorize the state to permit the sales of spirits for off premises consumption on Sundays? So secondly.
Any discussion? All in favor? It's interesting, it doesn't specify the seller, Robinsons.
No, it's.
No, because we're not licensing, we're just giving the state permission to permit. Because then one, once that we get past this, it's up to the state who goes to sell it.
And it's only, you said it's only.
Only one person can sell it in our size town.
Okay.
So then they get to decide.
Store. So they may not need to sign.
So then if you want to make a motion to sign the municipal officer's order for election, we can do that.
Some motion.
Okay. And you can't sign it.
Oh, yeah, that's the one.
Yeah, I just have to add.
A discussion on that one. All in favor?
Yeah.
Okay. So is there a deadline that we have to sign that one?
Uh, no, because you just voted on it, so. But I'll have it ready tomorrow, so.
And you have to submit it, though, with.
Just to her. Okay. So.
I think everything is put in a folder, then when it's all done, it's sent to the secretary.
Well, actually, no, just the um, the secretary, just the vote gets certified by her and then to the secretary. But I have checklist of the Wazoo. I got so many things that we can't the sample warrants, everything so that, because we've never done a referendum before. So this is all new territory for us and for you guys and for the people voting.
Different.
And different than our restaurant.
Right.
Only because at some point we must have voted to sell liquor on premises. At some point, we did do this forever and ever and ever ago, because every town is considered dry until they have these elections.
Okay.
And there but there's like seven questions and some of them are for malt liquor, which we've obviously uh already voted on at one point in time um to to sell malt liquor, so.
Oh, months and a year.
Yeah.
Going forward until we vote.
I know, right? So that's the.
All right, thanks for.
It was a lot.
It was doing your homework.
It was very, very.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Seriously.
Nothing is easy. Well, that's why it's taken sometimes almost two years, because this is very daunting. And if you don't do, if you don't read it front to back, there's so much that you can miss. I mean, just my notes alone.
Right.
It is just enough for somebody to be like, nevermind.
Started thinking it just needed a petition.
Right, right. Which, um, yeah, so that municipal officer's order is actually taking place of the petition.
Okay.
So.
Thank you, Elena. Sure thing. All right, um, Jim Drew.
Uh, I talked to Zach today, actually rented him up in Greenville.
Oh, great, great.
Yeah. And he said probably within a couple of weeks, he's hoping he can get his guys up there to put a few temporary patches on the screws that are poking out and get some of the rubber glued back down. Just to get us through until we get the money together to.
Did, did he indicate what that will cost the town?
No, he said it was gonna be fairly simple. It's just a matter of going up and.
Right.
Do we need any kind of estimate, though, for?
Um.
That's what I was.
Yeah, probably, actually, because depending on, well, depending on how much it is, like.
Yeah, I'll cover it.
What?
I'll cover it.
Well, if it's less than ten thousand dollars, then you guys have the authority to spend money.
Definitely, it'd be less than ten thousand dollars. Like, there's like four or five screws up there.
Okay.
And three or four pieces of rubber.
Because we do have some money in the maintenance line, but you guys have the authority to spend up to ten thousand dollars out of the gym.
Um, I just, I just am uncomfortable authorizing something, not knowing what the estimate would be.
Yeah. So, um, yeah. And can you get a rough estimate from him? Just roughly.
Or if you know?
I would, he didn't say anything, but it definitely, I would assume it would be under a thousand bucks, just what little bit there was.
Okay.
Oh, that's dope.
Okay, it's in budget.
Yeah.
And I can get ahold of him and say, hey, do you got a rough idea?
Yeah. Right, we don't. I just wanna know, one thousand, ten thousand, there's, there's, it doesn't have to be perfect, but just some ballpark.
Right, well, there might be a point if there's only a few spots where, um, we might be able to look at other ways. If it's, you know, if he comes back with some ridiculous, like, oh, that's gonna be ten grand. Like, we could probably fix it if we had to.
Yeah.
Like, so that's all I was.
But when I talked to him, he was kind of on the same thinking, you know, I was as far as just more or less, you know, getting the screws back down, throwing a patch over it, blueing it, blueing the rubber back down.
Right.
You know, there's no major, major overhaul being done.
Right.
Were most of those places along the edge? Or?
Oh, like on the pictures there, you could see we're right along the drip edge where it was folded up. But the screws are more or less, you know, up the roof a little ways. And a couple of the patches were in up in the middle of the roof.
Is that what that, is that a pad?
That's a big patch, yeah.
Okay.
So I, I couldn't get these pictures to download earlier today. I just did.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, thanks for. You know, spirit in that one.
Yeah. Need to have that getting any worse. So we can do our fundraiser.
For fundraisers.
Fundraisers.
Yes.
Okay.
We have a fire truck, so.
I don't think the fire department would go for spending it on the roof.
No.
Can I ask how that's going?
The fire truck?
The pro- process.
Um, slowly but surely.
Okay.
Um, they're, they're doing their work to the truck now. Um, they sent me over some paperwork, like whose name's gonna be on the title, that kind of stuff. Um, I haven't gotten a proposal back from John Simcoya. Um, but when I do, I'll definitely forward that along.
Okay.
And do we have? Did they bring in the funds they raised this weekend? No?
Yeah.
Okay. For their boot drive?
Right. So I don't know if they're just tiling it up before they give it to us or what they're doing, but I'm definitely going to uh be asking about it. I didn't even know that they had one until it was brought up to me.
I didn't either. I've been on the towns.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, an all indication for it, it's very successful, um, but I would hate to see that not handled correctly.
Yeah.
So after everything we've been through, so.
Yeah.
Okay, let's go on to new business and quickly leads.
I just have a couple of, um, well, a couple of um, tax abatements from the assessor. Errors and then um, this here is for a property uh that's being sold on Nana's Lane. And it looks like um, there was a lien a long time ago and then um, it just never got discharged. And so it's matured and all of that, so um, they just need to have this signed so that they can proceed with the sale of the property. It looks like there was just a mistake because it looks like it got filed twice instead of filed and released. So it was just some kind of.
Filed twice and so it was immediately discharged.
Yeah.
Okay.
But everything's paid in the system, so.
Okay.
So that's what this is. So need signatures and witness and. All over as it.
No, or that's for witness, she can.
Yeah.
So you, um.
I next to the bottom.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then.
I'm gonna say signature, print. That's like, or remember, I don't think. She's big genius.
Yeah.
I'll do it for one day, see you there.
He's supposed to do needs, oh.
There's no.
I can sell.
You can do that, okay. Okay. Wow, this went way back, didn't it? Um. We have miscellaneous, did you want us to approve the August twenty second Slidworth min- uh meeting minutes?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Yours is okay.
There.
Okay. I'll wait till.
Oh.
Aaron, it's very. We have just.
Oh, we have.
Vote to, yeah.
I made a motion to approve the August twenty second meeting minutes.
One second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor? That's sliding under you.
Oh, no.
It was.
And just.
I always like to sit in the back of the classroom. Yeah, yeah. Anything else miscellaneous?
That was it.
Okay.
We have a regular meeting next.
Thursday.
Now, hold off on any questions about ongoing things.
Yeah.
All right, motion to adjourn? I guess I just need it.
Exactly.
All right. Uh, any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
What you done for the plan board?